Yeah, whole thing. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April seventh meeting of the Town of Standish Planning Board. The meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at the exhibits that are offered. Please notify me if you are unable to hear or see the material. Board works from a prepared agenda and this evening we have two finding of facts to review the minutes of the last meeting. We have one item of all business, Rose Lane, and we have actually only one item of the new business, which will be Shaw Earthworks, renewal of their existing pit off from one thirteen. And if anybody's here for the Gorm Sand and Gravel Pits off one fourteen, they've asked to be tabled, so we won't be reviewing those this evening. We currently have five members, so we have a quorum for the board this evening. Deb is not here yet and Todd is out of town. The applicant has the burden to prove to the board that their application is complete and meets all applicable town standards. Any person wishing to address the board may do so in accordance with the following procedures. Please utilize the podium or one of the provided microphones. The board will open the public hearing for the applicant to present their project. The town planner will provide his assessment of the project and hear responses from the applicant. Board members will then ask questions and hear responses. The hearing will be open to the public for comment and the applicant can respond to those comments. Board may receive any oral or documentary evidence, but such evidence is restricted to the subject matter of the agenda item. The board shall exclude irrelevant, immaterial, or unduly repetitious evidence. The citizens shall refrain from interpreting, excuse me, interrupting other speakers. This meeting is being taped recorded and it's very difficult to hear what is being said when multiple people speak at the same time. Citizens shall avoid personal attacks and conduct themselves in a civil courteous manner as expected by all participants. All questions should be addressed through the chair. Speakers shall not attempt to engage in debate with other meeting participants. Upon hearing from the public, the hearing will be closed for that application and the board will deliberate and vote on the application. Following the decision of the application either towards the end of the meeting or at the board's next regular meeting, the board will prepare written finding of facts and approve them for the record. First item of business is the approval of the previous minute minutes for the meeting of March third. I read through. I didn't see anything. Anyone else from the board?
Thought they looked good.
Is there a motion to accept as presented?
I'll make that motion. Second?
They moved and seconded to accept as presented. Good, everybody.
Okay.
Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Four, one abstained because-
That was abstained because I was not there.
Good. Number one done. Next item is- Guy Tinkum. This is for his martial arts. At his house. It's pretty straightforward. Probably did these together unless the board wants to do them separate. Second one is for Robert Randall and that was for the extent, the expansion of his existing facility.
Just a question.
Twenty-five, yes.
Since I was in the butter, can I vote for Randall's or do I not vote for this? Because if I don't vote for this, then I'd like to do them separately. So I can vote for one and not the other?
Yes, excellent point. We should do them separately.
Okay, thank you.
Let's take Guy Tinkum's first. There are motion to approve the minutes, excuse me, defining facts.
So move, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Any further discussion by the board?
Do we have any update on the number of parking spaces?
Yep, he was able to verify that he was, that there's more space than what he was measuring the first time and that they are deep enough to fit a truck in there.
Nice.
Very good. The only other outstanding issue was the septic system and he worked that out with JP?
Yep.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Four, one abstained?
Yes, one abstained.
Randall's. Straightforward, I believe this was a twenty by forty foot addition to the store. Moved to accept as presented.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Three. Abstained or?
Abstained, yeah.
Abstained. Yes, I have the good pen. Just a second. Seventh, right? That was four, two, uh, four, seven, right? Next item will be item of all business, which is Rose Lane. Mr. Meek, the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Rick Meek. I'm with Terradyne Consultants. I'm the civil engineer for the project. I also have the applicants here, Bill and Ryan, to answer any questions. Since our last submission or our resubmission, we are in receipt of the planning board memo for this, this go around, engineering review memo for this go around and the safety, public safety review memo. As noted in Scott's most recent, most, his, his current memo, the most significant change that we've had, that we've made is the proposed wastewater disposal systems. Based upon DHHS comments, the engineered systems were not feasible in their previous configuration. As such, we're proposing seven separate disposal areas, each receiving less than two thousand gallons design flow. Therefore, they're not, no longer pre-engineered systems. And I just note that, you know, for non-engineered systems, the, the HHE system, the, the HHE forms are not typically provided at preliminary. So we will get them, but it won't be until final. As recommended by the, the peer review engineer as well. Relative to completeness, the subdivision plan now includes notation reservation for future right of ways to provide connectivity to the budding parcels as well as, including Cowan, the Cowan Road, Paper Street. A calculation demonstrating that the property meets the density requirement of the state statute was provided and submitted late last week were the test pit logs for those additional wastewater disposal areas. So prior to continuing with our presentation, we, we requested the board vote on completeness.
Thank you for providing these. What did you think of them, Carolyn? These are what you had requested, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I do very much appreciate that we have those so that we could see the elevations. I did think we would have more of the landscape plan incorporated in that. I do appreciate that we do have a very nice landscape plan included in the packet. So I, I did appreciate the addition of those.
And I will continue with my presentation, but I was hoping to get a vote on completeness.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were done.
Oh, no, no.
Just, I have one question about that.
Okay.
One item that is missing is I'm sure you'll have some kind of signage showing the name of the complex. And even in your little checklist, that's one thing that's not checked off.
They're not proposing any signage?
Any kind of name of the, of the apartment complex or anything like that?
No.
Just step to the mic so we can get recorded, please.
No, we have, we're not proposing any signage for the project.
So can we just check that off and say no signage, just so that we're all clear on that?
Yep. Certainly can.
Yeah. Did have one other question. Well, I-
Go ahead.
Couple, but um, I keep seeing that, give my glasses here. That since public water will serve the site, the applicant, I request a waiver to increase the density. Are we increasing it from the sixty units?
We're simply asking for the waiver for potential in the future. There's no plans for future development, but they want to keep their options open.
But we don't have any idea what that means or where that would be.
We're simply asking for a waiver similar to what the state allows for sites that are served with public water. If we don't ask for the waiver and we get approval, then there's no, there's no opportunity in the future.
Is there a limitation on with the private septic fields, on the capacity of that site?
Yes, the state statute requires twenty thousand square feet per single family dwelling unit. And then there's a gallons per day per, for sites that are multi-family, like this project. It's a, it's a prorated number per bedroom. So that calculation comes out to that this site needs a little over twenty-two and a half acres for the sixty units. The site is twenty-five, so we meet the density. But that twenty thousand gallon per day or twenty thousand square feet limit per, per residential unit is based on a site without public water and obviously all without public sewer. They do have provisions for a waiver of something less. They go as low as ten thousand square feet per residential unit. And with, with no density requirement in the zone in Standish, we're, we're left with what the state statute provides.
Yeah, to be clear, this is not a waiver from the town. This is a state waiver.
Okay, that, that's good clarification. I, I wasn't sure what that waiver would be, who that waiver would be addressed to.
In this zone, we don't have a land area per, per dwelling unit like density requirement. We, as, as long as they get their state approvals, then-
Okay.
It work, it works. So we don't need to do anything formal with that. As long as you get the waiver from the state, you're good to go.
That makes more sense.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thanks for clarifying.
Where's the punch list? We have to do this twice, one for subdivision, one for site plan, right? Do they have everything?
Yeah, I guess if you're going through all the, the lists individually.
I think if they want us to vote on it, we need to. I mean, that's just my opinion. Board members?
I, I agree with the chair.
I do too.
Okay with it?
Mm-hmm.
Let's do site plan first. It's your book. I don't want it.
In here.
I think we have a, we have a checklist, don't we, Scott? Items that are required.
One eighty-one, seventy-one point one is the elements of preliminary plan.
Yep.
All right. I'll just go through these. Name and address of the owner and applicant. They are on the plan. It in the title block. Gale and North Arrow. I believe there's a North Arrow on every plant. Gale. In the title block, and I think there's graphic scales up here. Exact dimensions and acreage of the parcel to guilt upon, and that is an second sheet created by Wayne Wood and Company. Has the overall boundary with the bearings and distances and the acreage. Going towards the envelopes not less than two feet. Those are on the site, I think.
Rating plan.
Rating plan.
Both phase one and phase two.
Yep. Building envelopes.
Going on a subdivision-
Subdivision plan.
And as well as a site plan.
Size, shape, and location of existing and proposed buildings. Architectural drawings of the proposed building shall be attached to the, the site plan. We had the architecturals last month.
Previously submitted.
Correct. And we have three D renderings that were provided to that. Location, dimension of parking areas, loading and unloading facilities, and points of ingress and egress of vehicles to and from the site to public streets.
Showing on the site plan.
In this case, we have that as well as we have the expansion or extension of Rose Lane shown. The location of all existing proposed easements and right of ways. And right of way. They're all on the plans. Even, even the future ones are shown here somewhere, yes. Shown but not labeled on C two four.
Uh, they're on the subdivision plan.
So Charlie, if we have any questions about any of these things, is this the time to like?
Yes.
So I, I would just like to go back to the, the parking. And just talk about the parking a little bit.
It's, it's provided, whether you agree with it or not, it's still provided.
Okay.
Completeness.
Okay.
Yes, we do need to talk about that later.
All right.
Yeah, if it's submitted, then that's one thing, but the design can be-
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, the location, dimension of pedestrian accessways within the Form-based code district. Show the location of the required reserved right of way or proposed driveways or Form-based codes. Village District Street connecting the project to all adjacent parcels, adjacent parking lots and existing roads. It's kind of the same thing we just talked about, right of ways.
Site plan and subdivision on this, I think this is more efficiently covered under the connectivity master plan elements of the subdivision review. And we have a plan that shows future roadways.
Yep.
That provide connectivity.
And they're on here too, so.
Yep.
In good shape. Location, size of existing proposed water and sewer mains, culverts, and storm drains. They're on there. They may need modifications.
Creating utility, correct.
Location of outdoor lighting, that was shown.
Do we ever see a picture of the fixtures or anything?
They're on the, on the photometric plan.
I find them.
It's the last, last sheet in your set.
Yeah.
Ah, yes. Okay, I totally missed that. Thank you.
Location of natural features such as watercourses, marshes, rock outcroppings, and stands of trees.
I just forested, so.
Other than the few areas opened up when they cut the trees. Watercourses are shown on here. Stream is shown. Drainage ways are shown. Landscape plan showing the location types of planting and screening. We have a landscape plan. Going on a couple of sheets, both overall phase one and the some shown on the three D uh plans we've received, although that, I guess the subject has changed. Location, size of signs and advertising features, so there, we've just been informed that there aren't any. Oh. Any other provisions contained in the town of Standish subdivision regulations and that the planning board deems appropriate, or any other ordinance of the town of Standish or statutes of the state of Maine or federal government. Fairly comprehensive submission package. A lot of that stuff that was subject to the state approval right now, right? DEP, is there anything else out there? Anything from MDOT or?
Just DEP, which we have.
Do we have it yet?
Yes.
Okay. And for the subdivision. We'll go through the checklist right now. We have a location plan. We also have the connectivity plan. Early on. All subdivision name and identifying title and name of municipality. On the title block. The name and address of the record owner, subdivider, and designer of the preliminary plan, it's there. You're gonna have to modify that planning board, I mean the title blocks, and so they're just saying client's gonna say, record owner.
Okay.
You can get it recorded. Number of acres, we already reviewed that on site plan. Location of property lines, existing easements, buildings, watercourses, essential physical features. And the name of all subdivisions immediately adjacent and the names of the owners of record adjacent acreage. If the subdivision is located in the Form Based Village Code, the preliminary plan shall be developed in accordance with conceptual connectivity master plan meeting the standards of one eighty-one seven one, as well the requirements of one eighty-one eighty. We've been through that on this. Uh, provisions of the zoning ordinance applicable to the area to be subdivided in any zoning district boundaries. This is all within the Form Based Code.
Village District.
Village District. And it's in the general notes. Location, size of any existing sewers and water mains, culverts, and drains on the property to be subdivided in any abutting properties. And right-of-way utilities, including but not limited to public water. Datter and power within two thousand linear feet of the property shall be identified. Location, names, and present widths of existing proposed streets, highways, easements, building lines, alleys, parks, and other public open spaces within the Form Based Code Village District. Provide the width and location of any Form Based Code Village District streets within the area to be subdivided and on any adjacent properties and the width, location grades, street profiles of all streets or other public ways proposed by the subdivider. We have all that. In the subdivision plan and.
There's a plan, there's a.
Existing plan.
There's a profile of the, of Rose Lane.
Yep. Want to align the intervals of five feet or such intervals the planning board may require. We had two foot for the site plan, so we're well within that. Soils report identifying the soil boundaries, names of the proposed, uh, names and the proposed development of the soil information. We have the medium intensity soils mapping and, and the names. Typical cross-section of the proposed grading of the roadways and sidewalks, that's all shown on grading utility plan, the profile and.
There's some details of the.
The details. The date, true north point, and graphic scale. We have grid and off, which is very close to true. And bearings on the Wayne T. Wood plan are magnetic, so we have both in here, I guess. There's the difference between the site plan and Wayne Wood. De description, that's in the application package that we I wanna say it's three or four. It's five. Sorry. Three. Connection with, with the existing water supply or an alternative means to provide water to the proposed subdivision. They are showing a connection to the water line within Rose Lane, but you don't have the letter of service from the water district as of yet.
Is it uh requested?
Yes, uh, we've made, I'll get to it, but we've added um, uh, fire safety requested a hydrant onsite. So we've incorporated that on the plans, it's not shown on your set. That was forwarded to the water district and I'm expecting their letter shortly.
Thank you.
You gotta run eight inch all the way to the hydrant?
Yes.
Is that coming off of twenty-five?
No, there's a, one of the sheets there shows some offsite utilities, but it's eight-inch water extends up past uh garden side, um, their garden side connection to Rose Lane.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll be picking up the connection there and extending into, into the site.
Need a blow-off valve at the end of that right now?
I believe so.
It was most of me, I think. That makes sense. Location result of tests to ascertain subsurface soil groundwater conditions for sewage disposal, we have a number of those and we have the ones for the additional area electronically. Provisions for collecting and discharging storm drainage in the form of a drainage plan within the Standish Conda District. Low-impact development stormwater standards as defined in one eighty-one seven point one shall be utilized. We have all uh details on ponds and everything. Preliminary design of culverts which may be required. Most of it's underground storm drainage.
Yeah, the only, the only culvert we're picking up is a, uh, it's a is it currently a ditch on the uh left side of Rose Lane? That we're intercepting and piping across Rose, the new portion of Rose Lane and discharging to its current location.
That's the information on phase one.
It's shown on phase one, but it's, it's shown on the overall as well.
We have a few preliminary design of culverts may be required. Third party has reviewed all that, we're good there. Proposed lot lines with the dimensions and suggested locations of buildings except in the Form Based Code District. Where the building position shall be located in a more detail through the Base Code Village District Street Frontage Type Standard. I think we're all set there.
Yeah, we have specific building location.
As the location of temporary mark is adequate to enable the board to locate readily and appraise the basic layout in the field. We had a site walk where the building corners were staked and road center line majority was staked. All parcels of land proposed to be dedicated to the public use and conditions of such dedication. That would be Rose Lane Extension. If, if the council so desires it to be.
Yeah, just the, it's just the road right-of-way, so yep.
Location of all natural features or site elements to be preserved.
Wetlands in the stream. The wetlands that were not impacting.
And then the non-impacted forested areas, what few there are. Few. Grading plan may be required for any and all lots as determined, we have a grading plan on the entire project. Preliminary layout of any bridge, bridges required.
Not applicable, other than the footbridge, the foot crossing across the wetlands at the top of this, uh, towards Poppy's Ice Cream.
Walking path.
Correct.
What about the stream crossing?
Uh, it was approved as part of the solar project, and I'll, I'll discuss that.
Alright.
Is that with the septic and the scre- and the stream crossing, is that what we'll discuss later?
Yes.
Okay.
Full extent of any floodplain is shown on the most recent versions of the Federal Emergency Management Agency maps.
Not applicable to this site.
Any area within the proposed subdivision that may be used for stump dump or for gravel or fill removal, the size of these areas.
Not applicable.
And the final one is for conservation subdivisions. That's not applicable to. It appears stuff has been addressed, Woods thoughts on any of that?
I agree. I agree.
Comfortable moving forward.
Right. That being said, staff has given us a recommended, a recommendation.
I would find that one.
And it is on page two. Staff recommends a motion. Move to find the applications submitted by Terradyne Consultants on behalf of RR and JP Properties LLC for subdivision and site plan review of the property at map ten lot sixty-one, complete for preliminary review. I'll make that motion.
Second.
They moved and seconded. To find the application, complete for preliminary review, comments by the board. Being none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, you may continue.
Thank you, sir. So also included as part of the resubmission submission were those architectural renderings you talked about. So those represent consistency with the site and grading plans. Uh, they show the patios, that was one of the comments. Uh, site turn, site turning templates, uh, which demonstrate adequate area for the fire apparatus or fire apparatus access and maneuvering, um, that was a related to a, a review comment. Possibly a board comment. But the fire department had no objections or, or comments about that. A, a profile on site distance to address an engineering review comment, um, that was provided. Signed and sealed boundary survey provided. Uh, your plan set is the unsigned copy probably. I submitted it electronically. Uh, modified the stormwater report to address, to address the proposed location of the gravel wetland now outside of the Rose Lane right-of-way. Included a phase one landscaping plan, um, that was requested. And we submitted the approved DEP stormwater permit. And I'll, I'll talk about that later, there is a condition. There's several conditions of approval, but one of them uh maybe addresses Scott's comment in the memo, in his memo. Scott, if you could show that, did I, I sent you that um sketch today for the solar panel project? I have reduced copies of, of this plan, if the board would like to have a copy. So this plan wa- was uh prepared uh based on a, Scott had to ask a question about updating the status of the solar project. Because we are showing, now we're showing these new septic systems across the stream to the north, um, and that area was previously solar panels. So this plan was prepared um for the applicant um by another engineer in my office. And down at the bottom of that page, there are some, um, it's a purpose, um, a planned purpose note or notes. I'll just read that because it's pretty tiny, see. This overall site plan figure was prepared to show changes to the Orchard Road Solar Project that will be submitted to the town of Standish in spring twenty twenty-five for a site plan amendment. These changes were coordinated with RR and JP Properties so that their proposed plan meets town standards. The following changes are shown on this plan and will be formally submitted to the town at a later date. Uh, number one, removed the solar array from the RR and JP Properties LLC land. Remove solar electric utilities from RR and JP Properties LLC land. Electric utilities for the solar project to extend to solar array through an easement across floor property. Location shown on the plan is approximate and will be finalized before submitting for an Orchard Road Solar Site Plan Amendment. Extend easement and gravel solar access from approved gravel hammerhead location to the southeast where the solar array will be located outside of RR and JP Properties land. Previously approved solar array gravel road extending from Ro- Rose Lane uh will be removed and now, will now extend off the end of RR and JP Properties LLC proposed road location. The end of the gravel road and wetland stream crossing remain the same as previously approved by DEP and the town. And the crossing will be built by the solar developer. So there are also previous planning board suggestions. I use suggestions because.
I ask a question.
Sure.
You're showing force mains running up the gravel road to the back property.
Correct.
For the four beds. So now with this new possible proposal, we hadn't seen it yet. They're gonna actually put utilities overhead across the wetlands? Is that the game plan?
That's their proposal.
In the mark four right-of-way. Your mark four right-of-way.
Their amendment proposal.
So there's no conflict there between their electrical and your force main.
Correct.
They're not in the same corridor anymore.
Correct.
Trying to picture what was there before. Like with more.
Yeah, that was, uh, I should, I, I wish I had brought, I I can, I should be able to find it. Yeah, they, they extended all that white space or most of that white space, um, on RR and JP Properties land was filled with solar.
And now it's not.
Maybe, maybe they did not extend all the way to the back, but.
Right, there was.
Certainly comparable.
Right, it seemed like that there was no connection to the end because solar interfered with that. And now all of a sudden the si- solar is gone on that property.
There you go. This was the.
Right, right.
This is the final one, but it's the general idea.
Right. So now it's this hammerhead that's coming down here to come over here, is that right?
And that's actually shifted, uh, away from this, the, uh, wetlands slightly. Or maybe not. No, that's, that's correct, that's the same location.
So now that kind of opens up the possibility of all of that somehow being connected with or built from that waiver. Potentially.
Yes, if the, yes, if the state grants that waiver. Except for the, you have to come back, the new projects to the state to us and everything.
Right, right.
The area on the left where the panels were, at least a portion of that now is gonna be tied up with septic.
Correct.
Here, the septic.
Yeah, we've got four septic fields in there.
Right.
But they have four septic fields in there now.
Correct.
How many septic units are there now? In this new, uh?
There are seven disposal areas.
Seven disposal areas.
And they have, you know, they're separated. I think the minimum is a hundred and hundred feet, I think. That's what's shown on, on our plan.
Are these areas relatively close to design?
Say again?
The areas as shown are they relatively close to design size?
Yes, yeah, I, I worked with the site evaluator to, to size those based on the number of units that are going to them. The exact, you know, configuration will be up to, you know, up to the site evaluator.
And if I read this properly, it's not like one whole unit goes to one. It's part of one, part of another.
Yes, in order to stay below the two thousand, we will have to plumb the building so that some units, you know, in, in the case of Phase One, eight units from building one are going to the first system. First disposal area. Four units from each building are going to a second disposal area. And the final eight units from that second building are going to its own disposal area. And for eight units, that works out to like for fifteen hundreds cubic, uh, fifteen hundred gallons per day design flow. Something similar for the other, the three buildings, uh, just over nine units from you know, nine units to each one of the disposal areas.
What drove this change?
The, the, um, we originally had engineered septic design on this development parcel on this side, you know, the southern side of the stream. The state, um, DHHS had a review comment about the mount, how the mounting analysis was performed. There's a, there's a factor that, that was used differently than, than they wanted to see. You use that design factor that they, they wanna see the mounting, the mounting analysis, the groundwater would cause the systems to be elevated. Which we didn't have the room to do that. So as, as they were designed, they're just not feasible in, in that location on this side of the stream. We could have moved them just as engineered systems to the other side of the stream, but that would have been, uh, more cost prohibitive than than using.
But we have to do something with the stream, right? With the septic?
We have to maintain a separation, which we do.
But it does cross the stream.
Force mains do, yes.
They buried in the road.
That's our proposal, that's our proposal to
populate it, or they don't.
Either that or they'll be directionally bored under the stream.
You gotta have four feet of cover.
To, uh, force main, I don't, uh.
If you're directionally drilling under a stream, you gotta go pretty deep, you can get a frac out. Like twelve feet or so.
Whole length, but if they pile that road, they don't want the pipes in it. It's gonna set in there big time.
If we are, if Stanish is planning to own it, are we comfortable owning private sanitary lines?
Even the gravel beyond the end of the turnaround. Well, gravel, that's where the lines route in the road.
So in general, we have private septic lines crossing the roads in Stanish in a few places already. Order to get, before we get to final approval, we'll need detailed engineering plans and then those would have to then, as-built versions of that are gonna be submitted to public works before we ever accept this as road. So it'll be multiple steps of review before we get that far.
Thank you. Quite for occasion.
Just don't wanna see him freeze up on you. Nobody, nobody wants to see that.
No, no, no. Alright, I'll just continue with, uh, my prepared statements. Um, so there are previous planning board suggestions, that have not been incorporated or removed from the plans. As it is unclear to us if they are required by the ordinance or simply suggestions, so, um, and certainly we can talk about those. As I mentioned before, we have added a hydrant as required by the public safety, sent revised plans to PWD and are awaiting a capacity letter. Um, I had mentioned this before, since the property will be served by public water, we would request a waiver. Um, we'll do that of the state. And we'll be reviewing and addressing the outstanding review comments, uh, both engineer and, um, fire, uh, public safety. Um, but we have no objections thus far to those comments.
I don't know if it's a stone water pond, but it's a small pond. Is that near where the hydrant is, right by the intersection of the two driveways?
Uh, no, the, they've requested that the hydrant be placed on the inner, the intersection of the internal road, um, Sunday Drive.
Nailboxes.
Yes.
I was just on the other side of the road, yeah, same area, okay.
Well, it'd be on the, be on the uphill side of that, of that road, of that intersection, near the stop sign.
Oh, near the little pond area.
It's not a pond, it's a berm.
Well, that's a berm?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I guess I better look at the pictures.
It's a balance export.
Say again?
Except to balance like the cut and fill to like keep it.
Yes. A lot of effort was put in to try to balance that site, yes. That's all I have for, um, items. So we have to field any questions?
The tree issue with the fire department and getting a ladder truck in there.
No objection.
Lower growth.
Well, looking at some of the trees that are called for, they're, they're not that big of a tree. Like the two that are in the front, they're twenty-five feet flowering ornamental trees. Would that really be an issue?
Uh, fire department believes it would be, yes.
For a twenty-five foot flowering ornamental tree?
It would restrict their ability to get a ladder truck, to put a ladder from the parking lot to the upper story windows.
I would suggest that whatever is proposed, we run it by the fire chief for their approval. Great. Get some mid-grade, something. Doesn't have to be a low-growth shrub on the ground, it could be a an apple tree.
Well, it's almost like an apple tree right now, that's the thing. And they are all sprinkled. I, I just, I'm trying to picture how that would impede that ladder truck if it's, I mean, I could see if it was this giant tree, but I'm just looking at the ones that are kind of in front by the parking lot. And so when you look at the circles, it's hard to tell really what they are. So you look up the tree and see what it is. But, I mean, I would trust that the landscape architect took that into consideration. Double check.
Certainly can.
Members?
Uh, well, while we're on the landscape architect plan. You know, I've just, this is like the first such project that's coming into our village center. And as I have driven into every one of these that I can see from town to town to town. All these apartment complexes have some, um, community space that's in amongst the buildings. Like a, a small picnic table with a pavilion with a grill. I mean, if, if you wanna have any kind of shared outdoor space. You know, I think we kind of asked for that, but unfortunately I don't see that on the plan anywhere.
We, we did provide some outdoor space. We provided the dog park, we provided a picnic area, um, over there near Papa's Ice Cream. We had shown, and this is one of the things that I, I, um, altered with the plan, we had shown some recreational areas on top of the septic fields. But then there were additional requirements requested by the board. And, you know, the, the tenants aren't restricted to their, their unit and their parking lot. They'll have access to the, the property. They can have some, um, passive and active recreation on the property. It's just not for, we just didn't wanna formalize it. Because there were other restrictions that the planning board was looking to, to add to the plan. So we've had, we, we have added the recreational facilities, it's just not what you're envisioning.
No, not at all. I'm just thinking if you're, wanna have a cookout with a couple of your neighbors, there's no place to do it. And you have sixty units there. You can't have a, a cookout on your deck. I'm sure the fire department would have a fit about that. I wouldn't feel safe about that. But if you, I mean, that's kind of like a fun outside, community building. I just see them in every other one that I drive through. Every single one without exception.
It's not a requirement of the ordinance to have a cookout facility? They've, they've provided some outdoor recreation opportunities. You know, this planning board doesn't have to rent from this facility if they wanted a, a, uh, a cookout facility.
I, I almost, um, we're, we're creating, um, a pleasant place to live here. That's not an expensive ask, it's not, um, an unreasonable ask. If we're talking about quality of space in a community in our village center for people that living there. I think that's a reasonable expectation.
But our question would be, is it in the, is it required by the ordinance?
If you're looking at, um, when it talks about the health and welfare of the people of Stanish, I would say that community building is part of that health and welfare. And I would put that right in that standard.
That's an amenity, that's not a, it's not a standard.
I would put it right in that standard for the health and welfare of the community.
That they must provide what?
A place for our, for them to be together so you're not cramming all these people in a spot with no place to be in a community.
You have, you have a picnic area, correct? You, you did say a picnic area.
Just may I, uh, in terms of the cookhouse and the patios, there's, there's space for a grill on every unit. We've got the dog park, the river, the stream crossing to go to Papa's Ice Cream. Um, recreation could be a baseball glove and a baseball and a lot of the grassed area.
I totally agree with that.
Uh, could, you talk about seeing these, um, at every development, every apartment, but I, could you have pictures or? I'm, can't envision what you're speaking of. I've seen a lot of the buildings that have gone up in Wyndham and I sometimes see like storage units, there's someone six oh eight, but I don't, I'm having a hard time envisioning what you're asking for. And one thing I wanted to mention, I talked to our insurance agent about some type of playground or jungle gym and there's a lot of liability associated with some type of structure like that, that I wanted to mention.
I would, I'm not advocating for the playground. I think that Georgie Jack is right up the street and any kid can go right walk with a walk or walk with their parents up the street and enjoy the park at Georgie Jack. Not advocating for a playground. And I totally agree that you can get out a ball and toss it around and all the green space. Um, to me, having the picnic space across the street over the, away from everything is not what I've seen in every other one. What it's been is a little picnic table with a pavilion covering it with one of those grills that you see at state parks. Um, because I don't think anybody is too excited to have a grill on one of those decks, one of those patios or right outside the building. Um, I would think you'd wanna keep that as far as insurance goes in a safer place. But I, I think we're setting, um, a standard and I, I don't think that that's a big ask. I really don't.
Along the same logic of going over to Georgie Jack to play in the jungle gym, Papa's Ice Cream's got six picnic tables that, we can add more there. It's a great place for people to go and hang out and congregate. It's walking distance.
Bring your grill to Papa's. You might go there after you have a cookout, just, uh, top it all off.
I think we do have some grills at some of our public parks.
Yeah.
Really, you know, um, Johnson Field, Memorial Park, and, and if not, I mean, maybe we can invest, uh, as a community into those public facilities. You know, rather than pushing that onto a, a private developer.
What do you envision as your amenities in your picnic area? Just grass?
Yeah, grass and maybe a few rubber made picnic tables, the same ones we have at Papa's Ice Cream. The ones that are durable, that don't rot, you know?
Is, is it gonna be anything in the, it's not gonna be homeowners associations rentals, but anything that would prohibit somebody from having a grill at the picnic area?
Oh, we haven't gotten into drafting our leases yet. You know, we haven't, we haven't discussed it truthfully. We, we wanna, we want a place where people can go outside and enjoy the property, not just inside the walls of their unit. So we're, we're aligned in it, but I've driven by, I've been doing a lot of market research and I, I haven't seen, uh, installed grills at each one of these. I, I'm, so I'm having a hard time picturing it as all. Yeah.
I'm gonna open it up to the public talking. Don't forget it, Tony. Alright. Where are we? Do you have anything else to add, Rick?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm open for questions, so.
Okay. Scott, would you like to add anything?
Um, I don't, I think we're, I've covered most of the new stuff. Um, we've got a lot of the information we needed from the last time. Really, the septic's the only thing that we really have any big questions still about. But I think at this point, from, from my perspective, that we're, the board's good to consider preliminary approval. I think a lot of what's left is gonna be, take a little time in bureaucratic process on how to figure out how this works with the solar approval and its amendment. But it'll be easier to do that if we have an idea of what's going on here. And I think what we have here gives us good information, especially with DEP approval in hand already to, to move forward if the board's comfortable with what you've been given.
This to happen and put the septic systems, where they're proposing them on the east, east, northeast?
North side.
Of the, uh, stream with the solo folks have to rescind their approval?
I think we're, they've shown us a, 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 so I guess a sketch plan.
I think we're, they've shown us a, 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 so I guess a sketch plan for an amendment to that project. And if that is gonna be submitted in the spring as they propose on that plan, then I think we can move this all in concert.
Do we have?
We'll need amendments to that.
Yeah.
And that may be a complicated bureaucratic process because that plan was done under contract zone.
Assume Mr. Hampton's gonna do the H G two hundred, seems that we did all the test bits?
Correct.
So we'll need those designs for third-party review?
Yeah, I mean, for final approval, we'll need the design of the, the septic systems, but that's. Very comfortable doing that in final approval, that's what we usually do it.
Board members, additional questions for the applicant?
I'd, I'd also like to revisit, uh, parking. So, I mean, we have a picture. Of all the parking and you have like this massive tar here and massive tar here. When we were. Doing the last comprehensive plan, and I know we're in the process of redoing that now. The whole stress was to not have major swaths of just plain tar. And to me, it almost looks like a racetrack. And I, again. You just don't see these large swaths of tar. You always see a couple of spaces together with a, a tree in there just to break them up. And you do that for a couple of different reasons. To slow down the, the traffic, to not have the heat from the tar. All around those buildings. And now especially if this road might be extended to even more residents. As we continue through, we're almost getting into a collector road. With the amount of homes. That it could be, that this whole thing could be. Futuristically on a collector's road, which means that these really should have a lot more. Parking lot restrictions than they do, and I'm not asking for the full amount. But I do think there should be some breakup of this massive tar. In this, in this parking lot. And you just, you just don't see that like that. Anywhere.
I think another, I think that we need to just discuss briefly is the fact that we have currently, even before us this evening for a public hearing. Relative to parking along the street, on Rose Lane.
So, uh.
It may change.
We did talk to Todd attorney on that, just to be sure we knew where this fell into the process of changing the ordinance. And his directive is that we consider this under the ordinance as it is today. We have undergone substantive review on this project under the current ordinance. And we can't legally change the ordinance on them halfway through that process.
Alright. Good to know.
Can I address Carolyn's?
Absolutely.
Comments directly? I, we did talk about this before and I thought that Scott corrected us on what the ordinance says. Yet they're particular to this site. This is what we're proposing to meet the applicant's parking requirements. The board has, has made comments about we don't have enough parking. But this is what we're proposing.
So. You're seeking the waiver for the state for a possible futuristic option. And I think as. The planning board, we would be remiss if we also did not look futuristically at what's happening with this development. Now, if that does become a collector's road, a collector. Road, then that, then it's a mandated, there's a lot more that should be done within that parking lot. So.
Their use is residential, we're, we're notified that this was a town residential road within the Form 8 code district, village district? That's what we're proposing. Whether it changes to a collector, that, that's, that's out of, out of the realm of this proposal.
I think having the waiver option. And a whole new display of the solar. Fields. Adds a little twist to that. There's a lot of land back there. Anyway. This, this whole idea of this massive amount of tar to me is just. A nightmare, it just means that cars can race through there. You have a lot of pedestrians going to their cars, a lot of kids using that little pathway to get to Papa's. And you, you have nothing to calm the traffic in that parking lot. There's nothing to break it up, there's nothing attractive about it as a, as a whole new development. I would really like to support this project, but I, I need. We're allowing the units to be close together with all this land on the outside. I think there's gonna be some give and take to make it work. And I don't think that's a big ask either.
The, the requirements of the district is to have the buildings that are on the street within a certain zone. So in order to do that. This is the best layout we, we can, we can provide. In order to meet the applicant's parking requirements, this is the best layout that we can provide. We meet the ordinance?
Not in my opinion. And so if, if that's not changed, I cannot be supporting this project.
We're not.
So respectfully, if I'm understanding this correctly, you think there's. Too much pavement associated with the parking?
If you look at these.
Yeah.
Swaths.
Yes.
Right, I do. And there is a, there is in our code book. That if you have a business and you're on a collector road, which I believe that this is going to turn out to be. Then you really are responsible for putting a lot more berms in here or trees. And I'm not saying we have to go crazy about it, but I'm saying I would like to see something else in here besides massive tar. That is, from everything that I've read in urban planning, you do not want to have all these large swaths. Of tar in your villages, that's just more heat, more heat, more heat.
So respectfully, in terms of safety of the tenants, which I think is the most important consideration, we've added the hash marks. If we feel it appropriate to have some type of five mile an hour speed limit sign posted as a reminder. I think that's certainly within, uh, reason. Having berms or trees that come out and take up the same amount of area as a parking space. I don't think it slows people down any more than cars parked in a parking space that would be there. And it's not a collector's road, as we just heard, like, we have to design the project for what it is now. If we're talking about ordinances, so I mean, for, and you, you, you also said something, and I don't want to misquote you, but you said it. It didn't look good or it wasn't nice and we would argue that the design that we put forward on the buildings, like we're, we've worked really hard. And invested a lot to come up with something that we think is a, a beautiful compliment to this town. And you made, you made a comment that you didn't think this looked nice or wasn't professional, I would, I would say after this period with you. And what we're doing is we're adding more spaces for these units than what is required under the code. And then also the horseshoe around the track is for public safety, to make sure the fire truck can get around and service people in emergency. So I just wanted to make sure that that was added for the record.
I do want to be clear that there are no parking landscaping requirements on this project. We have no landscape parking requirements in the Form 8 code districts and. This is a residential project and it is not on the collector road. But not for very many different reasons. The only section of lands, of parking landscaping requirements we have would not apply to this project.
Other board members?
I was gonna say, I really like it. One question I had, we were talking about, uh, fire and stuff. Would there be a dedicated fire lane or, uh, spot for the fire truck in any way? If, if these are all filled with cars, I guess, did the fire department think about how close they can get to the building with a fire truck and?
They typically.
Ladder and all that?
They typically have a, you know, a ladder reach and I don't know what the exact measurement for.
There's ninety feet on the boom.
Yeah, and the, this parking spaces to the, to the front of the building is, you know, you have eighteen feet for the parking space, five foot sidewalk. And then there's, I think fifteen feet from the sidewalk to the face of the building, so. Well within that ninety feet.
And then, um, similar to that loading, unloading area for. Delivery of anything, nothing, nothing like that.
They're gonna be double parked if the parking lot's full.
And I noticed the mailboxes were in that first.
It's part of the first, it's part of the first phase that would, that, uh, mailbox cluster would be built. Where it is proposed for the second phase as well, so that there's no re, rework of that.
That would be. The second phase would all, all of the mailboxes would be right there, like?
Yes.
I, I'd like to echo, uh, what Andrew, uh, mentioned. I, I think there's a lot of thought in this, this design, um, I think this would look, uh, great in our community. Um, I have a handful of kind of minor, uh, utility comments, uh, that could, uh, easily be addressed. Get into that now or? But, uh, so with sheet C two point two, um, S D eighteen, uh, shown as an eight inch, I would suggest. Uh, you possibly review that as a, a twelve inch, uh, pipe coming out of that F basin. Um, some of the slopes on the roof drain, um, are zero percent or twenty-one percent, uh, suggest your engineer, um, take a look at those. Sheet, uh, two, C two point one. I believe it's a level spreader, uh, down by S T W dash two, it's called out as a pre-treatment device.
Yes, thank you.
There is a note, um, on two point two, uh, note number six. Requiring an above-ground heated backflow, uh, preventer, uh, I'd like to see that shown on the plans.
It, it, it is. Where the sidewalk. Where, near the mailbox cluster where the sidewalk, um, connects to the sidewalk, uh, in the, um. That follows the Sunday Drive up the, you know, into the site. Called out a C note six, that is the location of the above-ground. Backflow preventer.
So just on the, the domestic air?
Correct.
Your detail on, uh, we see four point three, the four inch and two inch waterline dimensions, uh. With the force main, I think you need to add some dimensions, uh, numbers on that. Like to see what the separation is and how you're meeting the, uh, D H H S, uh, separation requirement of sewer and water crossings. Your blow-off detail on C four point five includes a weep hole. Uh, my understanding, uh, is that due to chlorides, uh, you're not allowed to have a weep hole in a blow-off similar to hydrants. Uh, not being non-draining, uh, in the state of Maine.
Sure, we'll, we'll check that, this is directly from the Portland Water District details, so we'll, we'll double check to make sure that that's. Not, that they didn't change that.
That's all I got, otherwise I think this looks great. Look forward to, uh, being in this mood for planning.
Thank you. We'll open it up to the public now, anybody from the public like to speak?
Want to mention about when you guys were talking about the, uh, using Georgie Jack. I've been kicked off the property three times because of when the rec is operating their daycare, we're not allowed on their property. So that is not an option, you can't be there. That place is open with kids downstairs, they don't want adults around it or they don't want kids out in the thing that they don't know who's there.
I was, I was gonna mention the same thing, Tony.
That, that is not an option.
Just after school.
Well, after, after, after five. Five thirty is when they end rec there.
And if you go up there in the summertime, they kick you off because the rec is running during the day, so you can't be there.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak from the public?
And I understand what you're saying. I also understand that these gentlemen feel like they met the ordinance and that is their focus. You know. Green space is important now and large amounts of pavement in cities and towns is important to eliminate where possible. I'm disturbed it's coming up now. That's in the comprehensive plan and these gentlemen have been through quite a bit to get to this point, from what I understand. So why is this just how the parking lot's designed and the place looking like a project? I'm just surprised. But I do hear what you're saying and I think it's important. But I think in the future, perhaps we need to look more at the beginning of some of these projects brought up before. To be clear. Thank you.
Hello, John Cross, Public Works Director for the Town of Standish. I would like to say I do like the design of the project and how it's set up. Uh, I have my one objection, which I know I've written to you about, is the on-street parking with the ordinance going in there. I've submitted for an ordinance change, we're at the first reading of that. My understanding it can't be changed, I would just like to see the applicant make an attempt to try to move it. In the arc of maybe Sunday Drive or the long part of Sunday Drive, push the ponds out a little bit to take away the parking of that. Cause part of my questions is, okay, we have on-street parking, so it's gonna start a town process for us of park, park, uh, parking bans. Will they still meet their, uh, requirements if we have to go into parking bans and everything else? I'm not sure how close they are in their parking requirements, but just some of my thoughts going on. If it's completely on private infrastructure, it's something we don't have to worry about.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Seeing none? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
That motion?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, closed the public hearing. Discussion by the board. Seeing none, all those in favor? In unanimous. Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one other question. For, and maybe John can help with this. One of the roads is a little bit wider. Twenty-four feet instead of the twenty-two that we have, I think, is that Sunday Lane? One of them. I don't know, if the town does take this over. Do we want the wider road or would we prefer to have what's called for?
That section is on the private driveway, it's not part of the public road or the proposed public road.
Okay.
I believe.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. The applicant is asking for preliminary approval. He is, based on our review, that they've met all the criteria, they still have a few things to work out between now and final. Finances will be determined at, at final, will? No, I mean the, uh.
Oh, you mean like performance guarantee?
Performance.
Capital impact, yeah, we usually do that under final.
Once we know what the final design is and.
I, I just want to mention, uh, the on-street parking piece, that's. I I just wanna mention uh the on-street parking piece, that's, that's all in phase two, right? That would be a really long time before that even comes be, right? Thinking a lot of things can happen between now and when that on-street parking could ever even be there.
I'll let, I'll let the applicant uh talk about timeline, but yeah, the the initial intent is to to build phase one, the first two buildings.
Yeah.
When that is determined to be successful, then they'll they'll look at at building phase two.
I I just wanted to, I guess, speak out loud that it was not imminent that on-street parking was going to be put in place. And even a road uh beyond the intersection there, it's, it's not even gonna be there for a while. Quite, quite a while, I would, I would, I would guess.
There will be some type of pro- uh driveway that goes to those back septic fields.
It will use the uh the stream crossing for the, for the solar panel.
They have a build, if they don't build it, you will.
They're planning to build it, is our understanding is.
Cause we have no idea what they're up to at this point, as we're just guessing.
That's what the plan, that plan was, and uh like I said, I, we just got it today, but that's what that plan indicates, is that they're planning to build that stream crossing as permitted by DEP and the town.
Girl. Just clarification, so um, phase one is the definite, phase two is a maybe?
They're both, they're both being, we're seeking approval for both. Um, it's just the timeline of when phase two comes online. Um, it, Scott, maybe you could, is there a timeline from approval to to start the project and then to finish phase two?
I believe it only, there's a timeline to start a project to, but I don't think there's anything to finish it. I mean, as long as it's stable, I mean, you're gonna have to complete certain parts of it to.
Right. In order to recover the performance guarantee.
Yeah, yeah.
Appropriate erosion control and all that stuff will have to be in place, yeah.
I don't know if I answered your question.
I assume we're gonna talk about this more in final when we have a we've provided a pretty detailed phasing plan already, but I mean, we're gonna have that all nailed out in pretty good detail. And we'll have their best estimate at that time of construction schedule and we'll see where we're at. I mean, that's part of why we require those phasing documents, is make sure we have a a a stable, workable and functional project at each point in the process of construction.
Talked about everything I've got on my plan, there was one other thing that came up and that's enclosure around the dumpsters, you're gonna handle that somehow with a detail or fencing or?
Yeah, we're proposing fencing with slats as a to obscure that.
So there'll be some type of detail on that. Anyone else?
Nope, I'm all set.
Alright. I'll uh, I'll read what staff has recommended for a motion this evening, moved that the planning board grant preliminary approval under provisions of standard land use code of the site plan, parcel map, uh ten sixty-one as submitted by Teradyne Consultants on behalf of RR and JP Properties LLC having found it to meet the review criteria of chapter one eighty-one, part three subdivision regulations, all of the relevant standards for local ordinance and requirements of title thirty A, chapter one eighty-seven subsection forty-four oh four of the main state statutes for subdivision review with the following conditions. Where does site plan fit in on that? We have that word in there somewhere?
Um, yeah, make it a so that would be in chapter one eighty-one, we've got part three, we'll need new site plan review.
Part three subdivision and part two site plan review.
On the fourth line down.
Okay, and then it goes on, final approval uh must be granted prior to the sale or lease or rent, I've added in there of uh lots, units, or the issuance of any permits. Prior to the final approval, the following items must be submitted, this is not an exhaustive list. All DEP approved permits, and we now have that?
Do believe we have that, yeah.
Well, modern ability to serve and did we get anything on the review criteria? They gi- they give a letter of of approval of the?
Yes, the the pr- the process right now is that they review the plans, um, once they've approved the plans, they'll issue a a capacity to serve letter.
You don't have to add an easement for that eight-inch water line up through in the hydrant.
Uh, I don't think so, that it's gonna be private from, from the the main up into the site.
Okay. Performance guarantee information, impact fee information, HHE two hundred for septic system. Um. And the, we now have the test pits for all septic locations, providing they work out. And any other, any other items needed to complete final review as specified in subsection one eighty-one eighty-four?
I guess if you wanna add one eighty-one seventy-one point two for site plan.
Yeah, I did that up above, fourth line down, part three subdivision and part two, site plan.
Mearing that, mearing that.
Down below.
Eighty-four is subdivision final.
Yep.
New list. Seventy-one point two would be the elements of final plan for site plan.
Good idea. So those are conditions?
It, that.
Not really, just a state.
Sort of an advisory list, like it says, it's non, not exhaustive. But it's just so we all know some major elements that are, will be coming.
I would make that motion with the contingency that all of the missing material get addressed.
I'm all seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Who uh grant preliminary approval? Discussions by the board members? We'll get some resolution as final comes forward. Seeing none, all those in favor? We got five, unanimous. Alright, we'll see you when you get all your ducks in line for final. Item one, let me just get item one out of the way here. Hey, item number two, Shaw Earthworks seeking their five-year renewal of the pit off one thirteen. They're not here. Do we do that?
Up to the board if you wanna proceed without them, um.
We're gonna, we're gonna see the other ones next month anyways. If they really wanna.
It's their magic, yeah, dorm sand is out.
Yeah, I mean, all approvals expire at the end of June.
End of June?
Got some time if you wanna table, tell them to come back.
What's the board's wishes?
You might take it.
You want them here or to table it until next month?
I might take it as if they're not here, we table.
I agree with Frank. Yeah, ki- kinda feels weird to vote on somebody, something that.
And they're not here.
That's in the initial uh presentation. Even though it is just a renewal.
It, I, yeah, of course it, it's easy, but.
Yeah, I don't see, I went through it. Yep, I mean, you can speak, it's, it's unofficial. Please step to the podium, ma'am, thank you.
I don't have negative comments, but I think they could show up.
I'm surprised, I know I can.
Yeah, I am too, really, but anyway, keep that in mind.
Thank you. Board's wishes, there are table to move, hey, a motion to table or should we go forward?
Make a motion to table?
Second.
Moving second to table this item until next month?
Yes.
Next month, okay? Discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, very good. And then item three, dorm sand and gravel, they asked to tabled until the May seventh meeting, as they were unable to make the meeting this evening, we actually have a request from them. Their motion to make that table.
Make a motion to table that?
Second.
Move one second to the table, dorm sand and gravel's application? Question by the board? Being none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Down to our public hearing, Scott, you'd like to lighten us up through them?
Uh, these are public hearings on proposed ordinances. As required by state law, the planning board must hold a public hearing on the ordinances. All voting decisions are made by the council and I think all these, both items are on the agenda for tomorrow night. First one is that what we previously discussed is removing the option for parallel parking on town residential roads in Formosa Code District. And to reduce the parallel parking on town avenue roads from both sides to one side. And this was at the request of the public works and that's pretty much all it does.
So it's not getting rid of on-street parking entirely?
We are leaving it on town avenue road, the commercial roads, just, it seems.
So like Randall's, when we saw Randall's at the workshop, I noticed there was.
Yeah, so it's right now.
On that one.
Yeah, it's likely that, yeah, we had that sketch plan that of Randall's being accessed off of a road. There, at least their internal road would be town avenue to be the commercial uses that they're envisioning there and likely the road on the adjacent piece to get there would be, uh, there's, we'll see what they come up with.
So, so what John Cross was talking about, uh, like a snow parking ban, is that what he was talking about?
Yeah, so the, the trick with parallel parking on the streets is that if people are parked in it when it snows, then you can't plow them out and they, they get stacked up with snow, so, yeah.
If we don't get any snow, then I guess we won't have any parking bans.
Uh, we went out thirty, over thirty-two times.
I am sure you did.
Uh, so obviously my concern and why it came up was we were talking about uh the maintenance of the parking spot, so uh after the storm cleanup, uh going by with a wing truck of the plowing, if vehicles are parked there. Uh, currently, we don't have a parking ban, I mean, it's steps that we can go with it uh in the future, maybe right now, but right now, like I said, we're looking at an ordinance change of so it's only allowed on town avenue roads uh for commercial type situations um and do away with it for the local situations for the housing.
I think some of the discussion we had over keeping it on the commercial roads is that's where it's more common to see, it's gonna get more use, people coming in and coming out, but also they're less likely to be parked there overnight.
Right.
During, and putting it on the one side still gives you a side to push the snow off if someone on the other side.
Question, so like some of um developments are already done, if somebody parks on the side of the street, is that what happens?
So I have, if it's impeding snowblowing, I do have the right to call the sheriff's office and have them remove, but we don't have an ordinance per se, ourself in the town of the parking ban where they could be fined a civil penalty or anything of that nature, but if they're impeding the flow of traffic and snow removal, there is state law that allows the sheriff or the sheriff's office, just cause they patrol here, to have them be removed.
Yeah, the only parallel parking that we've, that has been approved by the town so far is actually the town built is just right there on Oak Hill.
By the House of Pizza, that's the only place currently.
None of the subdivisions that we've approved have opted to use it.
My brothers took it out, if you recall.
Yeah.
Yep, a remote parking area, right?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking if it's not a parking space, but people do park there.
That's why I'm saying if they're impeding the removal, we, we can call and there is state law that allows uh law enforcement to remove the vehicle.
And none of, none of these rules would pro- prohibit people parking on the side of the road.
On a nice day.
In any, at any time.
This is not stopping that.
It's not creating no parking zones, it's just not allowing the creation of the lined paved.
Be assigned as a parking.
Okay, thank you.
Cause it is tight going like Apple Acres, getting down through there in the wintertime when the there's a vehicle that who parked out in the street, there's not much room to get around them. That's a good example of if you've been up through there after a snowstorm, it's very tight.
Just wanna say thank you for all you guys do, I do watch some of the meetings and listen, my first one attending, so.
I'm glad you came.
We, we appreciate uh your support of the meeting.
Any additional comments from the public? Board members, thoughts?
I think it's a good idea.
What was the public hearing on that? I'll move to close it, is there a second?
A second?
Moving seconded. The discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Alright, our second one.
The second one is a variety of housekeeping amendments, um, a lot of them are typos and overlooked references to things that have changed in the past. The few more, slightly more substantive ones are cleaning up our adult daycare and child daycare terminology and making, making sure it's consistent across the zones and changing a little bit of some of the restrictions that were put on them in the past, um. There was no distinction on say, on adult daycares, we have reference to home ones and references that don't have home on them and whether, so we try to clean that up and add a a provision that they can be operated out of a residence and to be consistent. Um, similarly, the child daycares, we're cleaning up on, clearing up, cleaning up some useless, so the terms are the same from zone to zone and they match the definition and making it clear that where they're allowed and where they aren't allowed. Uh, similarly, cleaning up some language around heavy truck repair businesses where we weren't, the use listed wasn't matching the defined term. And we are doing a couple minor changes on the CEO's request, um. One to accessory dwelling units, we had required a, that one of the units on a lot, the owner occupied, and that is a very hard to enforce section of ordinance, it's why we did away with the family apartments that we had is he can verify that when they build it, but once it gets sold, it's almost impossible for the town to follow up and and know what's going on. And there's no real reason for it, uh, the accessory is restricted on a variety of building requirements and size limitations and it just didn't seem needed to be there for the added complication it gives. And then similarly too, we were gonna add retaining walls to our fence permitting regulations and that's a a bare minimum permit, I think it's ten dollars and yeah, all it is, is verifying that the fence meets setbacks and we'd like to be able to do that with retaining walls as well.
So you wouldn't be able to build a retaining wall within a s- a building setback?
Uh, with the fence setback, so it can be pretty close to the property line, but we're making sure it there's been a few instances in the past where people are building it immediately on the property line or on where they think the property line is. And this just gives a minor oversight for the CEO to go out and verify that they are in fact building it on their property and what they're doing isn't gonna spill over onto the neighbor's property.
Requires a one-foot separation.
Yeah.
They should be able to handle that one.
I think that covers about all of it. Like I said, there's a few other minor typo edits and cleaning up some other references and terms that we had removed and missed a couple.
Anyone from the public like to speak on this one? Board members? Alright. Motion to close the public hearing on this motion?
I'll make the motion.
Seconded. Moving second to close the board hearing, any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? There you go. Alright, Andrew?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Seconded. Moving second to adjourn, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous.